Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council meeting for Tuesday, June 15, 2021. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice strong.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Ray Rower.
Here.
Councilmember Demmer.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
Thank you. Next is going to get this evening's agenda adopted.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Demmer. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? And the agenda is adopted. And our very first thing this evening is a proclamation for the Coon Rapids Women of Today. And it says Representatives will be here to accept a proclamation. Nice. So if you don't have any reason not to, why don't you come on up and I'll meet you in the front? Let's see, why don't we kind of come up here in the center? That way you can figure out where the cameras were. Good evening. Well, let's start with this. And it's a proclamation for the Coon Rapids Women of Today Day. Whereas, the Coon Rapids Women of Today chartered as part of the Women of Today and United States Women of Today Chapter, February 29, 2016. And whereas, Women of Today believe that through us, great lessons can be learned, worthy deeds performed, and a hand of fellowship extended to millions of women everywhere. And whereas, the Minnesota Women of Today and the Coon Rapids Women of Today are dedicated to actively promoting such public awareness and service programs as the Minnesota Milk Bank for Babies, Wishes and More, Breaking Free, Crescent Cove, as well as projects, educational programs, and fundraisers for the Coon Rapids area such as yearly donations to Alexandra House, back-to-school drives, volunteer ACBC food shelf, and participate in the Coon Rapids Chili Challenge. And you won that one here. And Snowflake Days. And whereas, the Minnesota Women of Today and the Coon Rapids Women of Today provide personal enrichment and leadership training for members of all ages and demographics through our belief in the advancement through equity and inclusion. And now therefore, I, Jerry Cook, Mayor of the City of Coon Rapids, on behalf of the Coon Rapids City Council hereby proclaim July 1, 2021, to be Coon Rapids Women of Today Day in the City of Coon Rapids, proclaimed this 15th day of June, 2021. Congratulations, and maybe you can introduce yourself.
My name is Jessica Schultz. I am the current president of the Coon Rapids Women of Today Chapter. I'm with individuals from our chapter, Jean and Anne Marie. Anne Marie was our president last year, so this is kind of like a dual acceptance here because last year was kind of a do-over. So yes, we really appreciate the opportunity to submit the proclamation and thank you all for what you do and thank you for allowing us to exist in the city.
Yeah, well, absolutely. We're thrilled. So what's, do we know what some of these things are? A couple of these things you want to, is there one you want to grab and explain?
Yes, please.
Crescent Cove is our current Minnesota charity that we're working for, and it's the first children's hospice home here in, actually, in the northern part of the U.S. And I personally have a lot of experience with it because I take care of a couple of children who have been there. And it provides both hospice care and respiratory care for the families when they are overwhelmed by the care of their child with special needs or a terminal illness.
That's awesome. You have some really worthwhile projects in here as well, too. And sorry we missed you last year. We were here, but nobody wanted to come in and see us. So here's your proclamation. Thank you very much. All right. All right. Next on approval of the minutes.
Aye, Your Honor.
Councilmember Demmer.
I move to approve the minutes of the June 1, 2021 meeting.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Grisgoviac. To approve the minutes of the June 1 meeting. Is there any corrections or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? And those minutes are approved. And we have four, four items on our, wait a minute, one, two, three, four, five items. Math is eluding me today, I guess. On our consent agenda, the first is to approve the temporary on-sale strong beer and wine liquor license to the Coon Rapids Community Strength Foundation for a softball tournament at Sand Creek Park. The appropriate fees have been paid. The background investigation has been completed by the Police Department, and the certificate of insurance for liquor liability has been ordered. The temporary on-sale strong beer and wine liquor license will be valid from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. from July 9 through July 11, 2021. So this action will approve a temporary strong beer and wine liquor license for Coon Rapids Community Strength Foundation for use at a softball tournament to be located at Sand Creek Park, 1008 Northdale Boulevard, on July 9, 10, and 11, 2021. The next item on our consent agenda, which is item four this evening, is to approve an amendment to a purchase agreement for 1009 93rd Lane Northwest. On May 18, the council adopted a resolution approving a purchase agreement for a single-family residential property at 1009 93rd Lane Northwest. The acquisition will help facilitate future interchange construction at Highway 610 and East River Road. The original purchase agreement established the closing would occur no later than September 30. The seller has found replacement housing sooner than expected, and the closing is now scheduled for early July. The original purchase agreement required the seller to remove personal property from the house prior to closing, but in order to facilitate the seller's move, the council were being asked to consider an amendment to the purchase agreement that allows the seller, three days after closing, to remove personal property. The seller would maintain insurance and utilities during this period. So we're looking to approve an amendment to the purchase agreement for the property at 1009 93rd Lane Northwest. Next item on our agenda is item five on the consent. We're looking to accept the 2020 annual financial statement. We just held a work session to review the 2020 annual financial statement with the city's external auditors, Malloy, Monague, Karnowski, Radasevich, and Company. And I'm sorry, Mr. Radasevich, if that was wrong. MMKR, Certified Public Accountants. Once approved, an electronic copy of this statement will be made available on the city's website. And so we're looking to accept the 2020 annual financial statement. The next item on our consent agenda is to set a levy date for the miscellaneous assessments 2021-1. We're looking to set a public hearing for July 6, 2021, to consider miscellaneous assessments as required by state statutes. At that hearing, the city council may refer appellants to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals for consideration. The Board of Adjustment and Appeals is expected to conduct this hearing on August 5 and make recommendations to the city council for consideration at the August 17 council meeting. That's kind of confusing how that's written. The city council is not going to be hearing these. These will be going to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals at their August 17 meeting. These assessments include services provided to taxpayers, in most cases, code enforcement violations, and the terms of repayment are determined by the amount being assessed. So we're looking to adopt Resolution 21-63, miscellaneous assessment declaring the cost to be assessed, ordering preparation of the proposed assessment role, and ordering the public hearing for July 6, 2021, on the proposed assessment role. And one item left on the consent, and that's item seven. Adopt Resolution 21-67, declaring participation with the council on local results and innovations state performance measurement program. Cities that choose to participate in the program in 2021 are eligible for a reimbursement of 14 cents per capita from the state, which for us is approximately $8,900. In order to participate this year, the city must file a report with the Office of the State Auditor by July 1. This report must include a resolution that commits the city to developing a performance measurement system and providing data for a minimum of 10 performance measures that have been established by the CLRI. So we're looking to adopt Resolution 19-67, declaring the city's participation with the council on local results and innovations performance measures program for 2021. And Mr. Stemwell, that still makes sense. You forgot you moved now. That still makes sense for the amount of work it takes for us to do that?
Yes, Mayor and Council. There's very little work required to report on the minimum number of measures that are in there. We report on some extra, but yes, it's, there's not a lot of time involved.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Geisler?
One small change. You noted it. I think there's a typo. It's Resolution 21-67.
Thank you. As I was reading it, I thought, why did we have 19-67?
Apologies. Must have copied this from 2019 memo.
We might have missed it in 2020.
All right. So thank you for that clarification.
So with that, I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Carlson. Any discussion or questions?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Demmer?
Since we just came fresh out of the work session, I think it's good to bring this up. The annual financial statement is when external auditors come and take a look at our books and make sure that we're doing everything above board. And while it may not sound super impressive to have no comments and a clean bill that the auditor say everything looks good, keep in mind this year was an incredibly complicated year because it included the federal government grants. And so it was a bigger deal than normal to get a clean audit this year. And I just wanted everyone to know that we did get a clean audit from the external auditors, and that's a real tribute to our finance department and to the city as a whole. So thank you, everyone who was involved.
And while you're on that, it was mentioned, but it's the 2020 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report that will be added to our website after this is approved this evening. And if you ever want to know everything about how the city works financially, this is really where all the, well, all the meat is. So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? And that motion carries. And we are on to eight, under, item eight under Old Business, Planning Case 21-16, Consider Ordinance 2246, changing zoning office/low-density residential to moderate-density residential 1575 Coon Rapids Boulevard. This was introduced at the last council meeting. Does anybody have any questions on this? What do you want to move it forward?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Demmer, thank you.
In Planning Case 21-16, move that the city council approve ordinance 2246, approving the proposed zone changed based on the stated findings. Just always check to see if the attorney's like, no, you have to list them. So it looks like we're good.
And then it just going to die without a second, or what?
I can't. Don't look at me.
Throw out a second, too. Motion by Demmer, second by Geisler. All right, discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
Can, I asked this question, I think, a couple of weeks ago when it came up on new business. But could you confirm the moderate-density residential homes or residents per acre? I think it's eight.
Four to seven.
Mr. Phanilius?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Grisgoviac. So the moderate-density residential zoning classification envisions, under our, under our current code, four to seven units per acre.
Okay. Thank you. Just, I didn't write it down last time.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler?
Yeah, and, and so we've got zoning, and then there's comprehensive plan. We like those two things legally. We have to keep in alignment where this is property that, while the backside comes up to some low-density residential, it's office, it's on the big road, Coon Rapids Boulevard. So it's typically where moderate density would make sense. So it's, and especially when the parcel has two different kinds of designations, it's better to just get it all cleaned up and make it the same. So, and moderate density is, looks to be the appropriate usage.
I did a drive-by, of course, this week multiple times, and the parking lot always had all kinds of cars in it. You're going, okay, where are you guys going to park now? All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? And that motion carries. And as Councilmember Geisler mentioned, when you change your zoning, you need to change your use. And so we're looking at Planning Case 21-15, Consider Resolution 21-64, change land use from commercial mixed-use low-density residential to moderate-density residential 1575 Coon Rapids Boulevard.
Aye, Your Honor.
Councilmember Demmer?
For Planning Case 21-15, move to approve Resolution 21-64, approving the proposed land use amendment from commercial mixed-use/low-density residential to moderate-density residential based on the stated findings.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Geisler. Discussion?
This is literally the same as the last thing, but in a different document.
Yeah. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? And that motion carries. And we are on to item 10, Consider Construction Contract for the Soccer Complex Building Renovations, Project 21-30. Mr. Hammer, you want to talk about this a little bit, or?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, Council. This is to begin construction of a remodel for the concession stand and the restrooms at the soccer complex. It's been in the budget for a few years. As we heard earlier, last year, everyone took a break. And so we're ready to move forward now by awarding a contract to Kinghorn Construction. They'll project manage this for us. We are over budget because of the two-year delay. And so what we're going to do is we do have the funds in the Facility Construction Fund. We do have some miscellaneous park funds also within the Park Improvement Fund to cover it. And the next item on the agenda is to consider a concession agreement with the soccer club. Well, they will make annual contributions to us of $2,000 to help offset some of those differences. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Hammer, this was going to be an expansion of the concession area and kind of a remodeling of the restrooms, if I understood. Was there also an addition for like, for a meeting space or something on the north end? So that is part of this current construction, then?
Mr. Mayor, that, that's not correct.
Well, that was a question. How can I be wrong? It was a question.
Okay, let me answer the question then. We were considering adding on to the building to make it bigger for tournament space and meeting rooms. The costs became prohibitive. The soccer club decided that wasn't in their best interest to do, so we went back to the original design of just improving the restrooms and the concession stand.
Okay, thank you. We just toured it Monday night, so I got a little, last night, so I got a little, I remember we talked about it last night, but I wasn't sure if it was part of this or proposed. So, thank you. All right, anybody questions, Mr. Hammer?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgoviac?
I was looking at the contract, and that's the contract between the city and Kinghorn, correct?
Correct.
In here, it says that, well, we are over budget by about $42,000. That the $80,000 is in our budget. The rest is going to be paid back over time by the Coon Rapids Soccer Association. How does that look? I mean, what is, there's no contract or agreement for that. Is it 10 years, 20 years?
Councilmember Grisgoviac, that's the next item, item number 11 on the agenda. It, the initial terms are a five-year, $2,000 per year. But the idea would be it's kind of in perpetuity as long as they want to remain there. And so we can renew that agreement over time. But the initial term is five years.
Got it. I missed it. There was three agenda points on this subject. Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Didn't tell you you were wrong.
Councilmember Demmer?
I said incorrect.
See if I'm wrong. So it seems like a fairly large increase from 80 to 120 for a one-year delay. Is that, I guess, would you like to just explain the 50% overage?
Councilmember Demmer, I know you love these contracts, and you never give me credit when we're under budget, but I certainly.
Oh, no, I definitely do. In fact, in fact, when you're under budget, I ask you if they cut corners, so.
So I will say, we, we put this number together in 2019 for 2020 construction. We're also seeing the increases of some of the COVID supply chain. So we receive multiple bids for each of those items within here, and those were the lowest bids available to us.
Yeah, so it's kind of a double whammy of, it just costs more, but then also it just costs even more.
Yes. And when we looked at the, the expansion, that's when things really went crazy, and they said, no, thank you. Let's just go with the original.
And so it was, I mean, it's the, you can't get wood, you can't get steel, you can't get, so, okay. Makes sense. I just figured it's always good to get that into the record that we didn't miss the fact that it went up, so.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I will make a motion to approve the construction contract with Kinghorn Construction, Project 21-30, the Soccer Complex Building Renovations, and authorize staff to execute the agreement. Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Ray Rower. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? And that motion carries. Thank you. And we are on to item 11, Consider a Concession Stand Agreement between the city and Coon Rapids United Soccer Club. I think we already kind of got the layout, layout of that one. So, yeah, yeah, $2,000 per year to the city for continued use of the concession stand. They will be responsible for all costs associated with equipment that they own within the facility, and the city will maintain the building structure. Anybody have any questions of Mr. Hammer on this?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Demmer?
I just can't remember. Is this sort of how the concession stands at other parts of the city, like at Sand Creek or whatever? This is sort of our standard way of dealing with this, that the clubs pay a set fee, or is this new because of the construction?
Councilmember Demmer, they, they do differ a little bit. Sand Creek is the Lions, so there is part of the agreement that those dollars go back to community strength, and some of those items or the additional funds stay within the Park Improvement Fund for needed improvements within that particular park. Aspen really hasn't been used in a while. We've had some conversations with the other Lions group for Lions Coon Creek Park, but we have no such agreement in place for that. It really started with the expansion discussion of how do we pay for this additional cost because it's not really a benefit or a need for the city itself. And that's when they said, well, we're happy to contribute. And as time went on, this is where we arrived.
Thank you.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Ray Rower?
I make a motion to approve the agreement for concession stand operations between the city and the Coon Rapids United Soccer Club.
Second.
Motion by Ray Rower, second by Johnson. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgoviac?
This is kind of where I got a little confused on my earlier question, but there must be an agreement in place right now for the soccer organization to utilize the concession stand. How does that differ from this? And I'm just trying to weigh that into the construction agreement.
Councilmember Grisgoviac, there is no current signed, it's kind of a handshake deal for what they've been doing at that facility. And they invest dollars back into the facility, you know, netting enhancements, turf establishment, things of that nature. So they do make improvements, and they do make contributions, but it's never been formalized.
Okay, I got it. And they do a great job out there. People comment on that soccer field and the operation out there all the time. I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
And I believe last night they said the construction would start kind of as soon as they finish their season and then kind of go through the rest of the summer or something?
That's the plan. I believe it's late July. They take a little break, and we just want to be done, I think, by the end of October. I think they've got a big tournament around that time. So we're going to meet within those schedule dates.
Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? And that motion carries. We're on to item 12, To Consider Resolution 21-68, Amending the Revolving Construction Fund. And this is regarding a joint powers agreement with Anoka County for completing the preliminary engineering, environmental analysis, and final design of the proposed interchange down at 610 and East River Road. Mr. Hammer, you want to hit the highlights on this one, or?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. If you recall, the city is leading this project, and it's really funded through state grant funds or state bonding funds. However, MINDOT receives the funds, passes them on to Anoka County, who passes them on to the city. And so we have to front-end the costs, and then we get reimbursed typically within about 30 days of a, of a pay request. So we have nothing in our budget today to cover these funds. I was going to put it in for 2022. However, MINDOT has said we can't enter into the agreement to distribute the funds to Anoka County until we see that these dollars are encumbered in your budget. So it's just procedural to put the money into the Facility Construction Fund. It's 100% reimbursable. It'll come back except for $67,500, which is the city's contribution. And then Anoka County has also put in a matching 67.5. That's the city and the county's contribution to this 1.5 million.
Excellent. All right. Anybody need anything further from Mr. Hammer?
Aye, Your Honor.
Councilmember Demmer?
It's like a dollar a person. So I'll move to adopt Resolution number 21-68, Amending the Revolving Construction Fund for Preliminary Engineering, Environmental Analysis, and Final Design of the Proposed Interchange at County State Aid Highway 1, East River Road, and Trunk Highway 610.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Ray Rower. And credit for getting through that, those acronyms, yeah. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? And that motion carries. And this item 13 is to consider a joint powers agreement with Coon Creek Watershed District for Pleasure Creek Biocar slash Iron Enhanced Sand Filter Project. You want to give us a 10,000-foot look at that one?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, Council.
You want to take us into the weeds?
We did, we did a separate agreement, very similar to this, in Woodcrest Park a couple of years ago. They've identified another impairment on Pleasure Creek, so we have some land down there. It's our south yard off of Evergreen. We've got some stormwater ponds, so there's a great opportunity for it. So the watershed is putting in the dollars. They received some clean water money. So it's no cost to the city. We just have to allow them access and space and give them easements, and we help maintain it in perpetuity.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson?
Make a motion that we approve the joint powers agreement with the Coon Creek Watershed District for the implementation of the Pleasure Creek Biocar slash Iron Enhanced Sand Filter Project.
Second.
Motion by Carlson, second by Johnson. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgoviac?
A question for Mr. Hammer on, you said we help maintain it over time, but with the Coon Creek Watershed District, when the filters need to be updated or whatever, are they going to be back in helping with that part?
Yes, that's part of the ongoing maintenance, Councilmember Grisgoviac.
Got it.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? And that motion carries. We are on to item 14, Consider Resolution 21-14 sub 8, Approving Plans and Specifications and Ordering Advertisement for Bids, Riverwalk Sanitary Sewer Lining Phase 2. So exciting. So, and this is going to be a lot shorter project than everything that Met Council is doing down there now, right?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, that's wonderful. You want to just hit the highlights of this, or do you want me to read some of your discussion?
I can certainly hit some highlights. We did phase one last year from their lift station just to get to get into the Port Riverwalk area, approximately Zilla and 100 Lane. This would pick it up from that intersection and bring it all the way over to Egrid Boulevard. There's a lot of backyard area that was recently part of that Riverwalk. So the idea is to try to get it done before more homes are built, more fences, more irrigation systems, more obstruction. So we want to get out of that area. We're also going to look upstream of that, see if we have any further deficiencies for future years to look at. But this gets us through Port Riverwalk area, gets us back onto the roadways where we have a little better access and ability to maintain. We did, however, find a few areas in our recon project for this year that had small segments of clay pipe that didn't get lined in previous. And so what we've tried to do is lump it in with this grouping right here and get them all done at the same time. So we'll get Port Riverwalk done this fall. It may spill into next year for the recon areas, depending on how quickly those areas get completed. But we figured, let's, let's take this. those areas get completed. But we figured, let's, let's take this program, get it done, take a year off, and I'll be back looking for a large diameter lining probably in two years.
Forty-two inch diameter sewer pipe. I, I gotta, I gotta stop thinking about that. All right. Council, what do you think?
Uh, Your Honor?
Councilmember Demmer?
I did have one question, and then I can make a motion, but the, the little note at the end saying there's a budget impact at the time of the contract award. Staff will present a budget amendment resolution. I know we had the meeting where we talked about this. I just don't remember if this was the really big budget amendment. So if you could just remind us, this is pretty big, right?
Yes, Councilmember Demmer, we're probably looking at about a million-dollar budget amendment for this.
Okay. And for people at, you know, understanding at home, the, what does that work out to in like, I don't know, something like number of houses served, or just, just some understanding of what, what the city gets for the million?
This segment of pipe, as Mr. Mayor said, is the forty-two inches. Every home south of the railroad tracks flows through this pipe to the lift station.
Okay, so like half of the city?
Approximately, yes.
Then that makes it sound like a much better deal.
We do not want this to fail.
All right, so with that, move adoption of resolution number twenty-one dash fourteen sub eight approving plans and specifications and ordering advertisement for bids for the Riverwalk Sewer Lining Phase Two project.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Geisler. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hammer. And it's really nice to have you, have you.
It's nice to be here.
Item fifteen is to consider two thousand and twenty-one police officer labor agreement and adopt resolution twenty-one dash sixty-six approving the labor agreement. Mr. Stemwell, this is a one-year. Don't we normally do longer than one year?
Yes, Mayor and Council, we determined about a year ago to do one-year contracts during the middle of the pandemic to create some flexibility around changing environment. Typically, we look at two or three-year agreements just to provide some stability for both the city from a budgeting perspective and just for the employees as well. And then with regard to the other elements of the contract, I'll actually ask Lori, our Assistant City Manager, HR Manager, to fill you in on the rest.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. We're asking for approval of resolution twenty-one dash sixty-six. We have a tentative agreement with the law enforcement labor services, Local Number two oh seven. The details are a one-year contract, a two percent COLA increase, and a thirty-five cent per hour market adjustment, and also language changes to the experience requirements in our contract for lateral entry and available step progression for new officers to improve recruitment and retention.
Very good, thank you. Anyone have any questions of that?
No, Your Honor.
Councilmember Johnson?
I'd like to move approval or and adoption of resolution twenty-one dash sixty-six approving the labor agreement and all MOUs between the city and LES, Local two oh seven.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Carlson. So Chief, do you have any concerns if we're incentivizing lateral movements into our department? And I know we do a fabulous job training officers with the Coon Rapids Way of Policing. Do we have any issues when you get the experienced officers in here kind of refocusing them to the Coon Rapids Way of doing things?
I don't have any concerns, no, is that it becomes the central part of our recruiting process or even our interviewing process to see, to find a candidate who's amenable to doing things the Coon Rapids Way. That said, is that it's hard to find good police officer candidates. And frankly, us having to amend our contract, that reflects higher compensation for somebody lateraling in, isn't necessarily a good sign, because we're going to cannibalize other police departments is what we're going to do. Places that have a dysfunctional culture or conflict within, you know, whatever a city or an organization is, is that we'll take young people out of school or that are fresh out of school, but we're also looking to take the best that other agencies have to offer. And, and we just did a lateral process. I didn't get a ton of candidates. We had seven, but they were all seven great candidates. So we're able to, to address our staffing needs with other agencies. And we can get away with that for a while, but it's going to, you know, eventually that pool will dry up too. But it's good that we're able to take advantage of people that are looking to move. And we have a culture that people want to come to, so we're happy about that.
And it's, and it's nice that we're flexible enough that we can just do this and make it happen, so. All right, we have a motion and a second. Discussion? Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Greskowiac?
I, I like the lateral movements here and the way we're doing that to, to get people in here with some experience, of course. We've, I don't, I'm not familiar with the market adjustment that we're doing in this contract. I have seen the two percent COLA in quite a few contract years for a while, but that thirty-five cents an hour market adjustment, that, isn't that pretty much another one percent COLA? Can you explain what, why that's in here? I don't know where, where I go to. Does it matter?
Yeah, I can, Mayor, go ahead, Lori, if you want to.
Sure. When we look at our comparables, we found that we are below market. It's really critical for the city of Coon Rapids to have a police department that has, you know, great officers employed to best serve our city and our citizens. So we need to be competitive. So looking at how we stacked up with other cities, we found that we needed to do a market adjustment so we can remain competitive, improve our recruitment and our retention, and attract, you know, the best qualified candidates out there. So that's why we are requesting a market adjustment. We want to remain competitive and be in line with our comparable cities.
Mr. Stemwell?
Mayor and Council, to add to that just a little bit, you know, we look at sort of the, you know, the cost of doing business, and that's where the COLA is coming from, and that's what was applied to the other unions that have settled, as well as the unrepresented. The, the market increases really, as Ms. Ross said, that we're looking at the market competitiveness, and especially within police departments, the market is inflating quickly, because everybody's trying to outcompete with each other in order to recruit the best police officers that they can. This, there is some precedence for this in previous contracts going back a number of years. You know, typically, we do just do a flat COLA, but in other contracts, I can recall in Public Works and some other areas where there are certain segments of the contract, maybe a particular position or a lead pay or something, where you say, well, this is behind market, and so we try to catch up to that. In this case, it was just all the police officers were starting to maybe drift a little bit, so we had to elevate to remain competitive with that, given their, their condition. So that's where that thirty-five cents an hour came from, was looking at sort of the average of our comparable cities and making sure we stayed, you know, kind of in that same lane so we can compete.
Thank you. And the reason I ask that is, I mean, we want to obviously attract the best of the best. We don't want to lose any of our really good police officers. We've got a good culture here, so I think that's a smart move we're doing here.
Your Honor?
Councilmember Johnson?
I, I think Councilmember Greskowiac hits the nail right on the head. I mean, it, it's important not only for recruitment, but also for retention of the talent that we've invested so much in. You know, as my, my grandfather used to say, sometimes it's worth it to pay for a chef rather than a fry cook, you know, just to simplify it down. But when we're doing policing and we're having that kind of impact on the community, we, we really do want the best of the best. So I appreciate staff identifying and listening to the officers, that there was a market adjustment needed, and then coming forward with an appropriate recommendation, so I'm going to support it.
All right. Councilmember Ray Rower?
I just have a clarifying question to make sure I understand the A, B, and C. So for example, on letter B, if someone came in with four years of experience, they would make the same as an officer that has two years of experience in Coon Rapids? Is that the way it reads? Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. And item sixteen is to consider driveway access and development agreement. And I'm not even going to take a run at those names. But these folks are the new owners of a parcel located to the west of Hummingbird Street at a hundred and twenty-seventh Avenue. Property is located south of Woodland Oaks Park, and it currently does not have access to an improved public road. The city has an unimproved dedicated public right-of-way, a hundred and twenty-seventh Avenue, that runs from Hummingbird Street to the property. The previous owner had discussions with the city for several years regarding access to Hummingbird Street via the public right-of-way, and in two thousand and twenty, the previous owners and the city reached an agreement for access to the property. And while the city approved the agreement, the previous owners never executed the agreement and have now sold the property, and these folks are seeking the same access to the property. So we gave this a really hard look in two thousand and twenty, and the, these new owners are willing to accept it the way we discussed then. So does, does anybody need a presentation on this, or?
Your Honor, the only, the only thing I can't remember is, was there access down the south as well, or are they just driving over the unimproved road? Like what, how, how do they currently get there?
They're not.
Well, they're not.
Oh, it's just an empty parcel?
It's an empty parcel.
That's right, okay.
So they're looking to develop that empty parcel.
I think I was thinking of a different one that we had to snowplow. Anyway, okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sorry, thinking of the wrong one.
I believe a hundred and twenty-seventh Lane.
Mm-hmm. It looked similar on the picture.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, well, then I would move to approve the driveway and development agreement with the owners and authorize that the mayor and city manager execute the agreement.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Geisler. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. And item seventeen is to consider resolution twenty-one dash sixty-five amending the budget for the purchase of body worn cameras and related expenses. And I think I'll just turn this over to whoever you want me to turn this over to.
Well, Mayor and Council, I can speak to maybe some of the, the budget adjustments going on here and then ask Chief Weiser, I see Captain Sanders in the room as well, maybe speak to the, the neater and what's to come after this. So tonight, what we're asking Council to do is essentially approve the budget amendments that would allow us to move forward on a few things, primarily on moving forward with body worn cameras. This has been a conversation that we've had with regard to our police department for a few years. As we got into the start of two thousand and twenty-one, we decided it was, it was a good time to advance that conversation, though we did not budget for it. One of the reasons it works well this year, as we just talked about in our audit conversation, is that we have excess fund balance that ultimately came from CARES Act. Those CARES Act dollars supplanted a lot of police-related budget in two thousand and twenty. And so in some effect, this is just using police dollars from last year to help pay for this program. The second piece of it is, it would be really important to have a digital evidence technician. There's a tremendous amount of work that will go into managing this data and the video, and making sure that we're saying good legal parameters. And then finally, there's a construction component to house that, new employee, and some other related expenses. So those C3s are being presented to you as budget amendments using that excess fund balance in two thousand and twenty. There will be some future things that Council will need to do with regard to the contracts, particularly for entering into the agreement with WatchGuard for the body worn cameras. And I'll pass it on to our police department to explain the need from there.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, I should just give you a broad overview, and I think I will, given, I'm, I'm expecting there's a handful of questions about how we plan to implement this whole program. So I will defer to Captain Steiner here eventually, and, I imagine he'll, you'll, you'll want him to come to the lectern. But big picture is that when we replaced our in-squad video system, we've had in-squad video since two thousand and nine. We replaced that, I believe it was two thousand and eighteen or thereabouts. When we went through the vendor selection process, one of the criteria was to choose a system where body cameras could be integrated into it. Obviously, budget, you've sat through enough budget meetings to know that money is, is tight, and, you know, we don't, we want to be responsible to the taxpayers. But this represented, the CARES Act money represented an opportunity that really we need to seize. So our, as far as a budget process goes, is that we tried to front-load as much of the cost as we could, and then have the ongoing expenses be less accordingly, since those ongoing expenses will be part of the general fund levy. So with that, if you have operational questions, I think I'll defer to, to Captain Steiner about how we plan to implement. But this, this should be a good conversation. I hope you want to engage in, in some talk about how we plan to go forward with this.
All right. Captain Steiner, you want to approach the handball there? Do you have anything you want to just prime the pump with, or do you want to just answer questions?
Mayor and Council, I don't know if I need to prime the pump. I think current events kind of speak for themselves as to the, the need and the desire to have these. And I think Chief Weis spoke to the, the reason why this is coming forward now. This is not a new topic. We've researched it in a few different past years, and, and it didn't come to fruition until, until just now. We did look at three competitors, or I'm sorry, three bids total, Digital Ally, Axon, and Motorola WatchGuard, which is the same company. This one made the most sense to our committee, and it's important to note that we already maintain, excuse me, and use a WatchGuard system. So that's already in the squads as a, the in-car video system, which made a lot of the other companies really not feasible, because we would be ripping out everything we currently have and replacing it. And we are happy with the system that we have, so.
And this kind of just starts us down the road. Eventually, we'll have to have a conversation about policy and body camera policy and such, right?
That's correct. There is, there is a pretty well-defined process for public input and notice, as well as what we have to do to comply with statute. The policy, although we just started the policy discussions internally, it's largely, it's largely policy that exists. We're modeling ours, we're planning on modeling ours off of the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust. I say it's kind of like a choose-your-own-adventure book. There's some decisions to make, and if you choose this, then this is the language and that they use. So it's a pretty well-defined process.
You got any questions? Councilmember Demmer?
Finance question, probably, which is, like, I guess, what's the depreciation schedule? Like, how long do these last?
Well, I can tell you that, and it's important to note that the industry trend is these five-year subscription to contract. You have to go three years, and then they'll replace and upgrade our body worn cameras with the newest, best technology. And then I guess you have to get into another contract to get them replaced again, which, but that seems to be the trend in the industry. So this is, a lot of this is purchased as a service. And with that comes maintenance and upgrades to the technology and to the software.
I guess that's what I was kind of hoping when I saw the, the one-time cost versus the annual fee, is that the annual fee was to keep us with the best equipment, so we weren't going to have a giant lump sum somewhere down the road. But so it, it mostly stays flat with little bumps here and there is, is the way to think of it.
Correct. And they, and they put this, they put this quote together and structured it the way we wanted to, which was to get all the one-time expenses taken care of on the front end, and then have a real stable, more manageable number going forward over the next five years.
Great.
Councilmember Johnson?
Is part of that subscription fee, do they, do they provide training as well as a part of that service?
They do.
We get a lot of information on how much this is going to cost, and I think we all understand and appreciate that. But there's also the component of it takes time to gear up, it takes time to train people. There will be the continuing education that goes on, and, and there are other kind of parts that cut into the, the work that you guys are already doing.
Councilmember Johnson, that's correct. They do, they do an onsite setup with us, and they'll train a staff and basically train the trainers. And then we'll, because of our shift work, it's, it's just not conducive to getting everybody in a classroom at the same time. And yes, there's, it's part of the subscription. They keep us, they take care of us pretty good. That's our, that's the way it was presented, and that's the way our experience has been thus far with WatchGuard.
Just one follow-up, if I might, for Mr. Brody. We, our city attorney's office handles the two cities, Fridley and, and Coon Rapids. Our city attorney's office handles the two cities, Fridley and, and Coon Rapids, and contract with Fridley. Do they use the similar system, or do they use a completely different system, and will that create issues for you?
It's a different system, but, I mean, it's the same concept, their body cameras are taking videos of the same type of incidents. It's just a different mechanism of gathering it, and we put it in the same, we'll put it in the same spot and send it to defense attorneys in a similar fashion, but unfortunately, they're not identical systems.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Geisler.
Just, can you, you know, I know if we look at this, this gets us down, started down the path, right? So our next steps are going to be things like making sure the policy's in place before we actually put them into use. What is the timeline that we'd be looking before these would actually be in use?
I was told, I'm sorry, Councilmember Geisler, I was told that about eight to 10 weeks to take delivery once a contract is signed, and I realize this is just a resolution right now, and then we still have to put together, we do have the contract or proposed contract that Mr. Brody's reviewing, and hope to get that going as soon as possible. We had originally got optimistic and thought maybe we could get into this early September, but it really looks like more of an October 1st issue now.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Griszkowiac.
Kind of to the subscription question, I, I got a little bit of information on that, but I was kind of wondering, what all is in that subscription? Is it all the service and maintenance, so these things will just be running flawlessly? And is that what the subscription is, or is there any other, you know, are we, are they archiving anything for us, or what else is in that subscription?
Yep. Councilmember Griszkowiac, it is include unlimited data storage in their cloud, I think it's evidencelocker.com, but I'm not 100% sure on that. And that is, as you probably know, one of the more expensive propositions. It's going to cost, this thing also includes $12,000 to migrate all the data over into their cloud from where it's currently stored through Logis. And just about, it is a full warranted system, if we break one, they send it, they send us a new one. And I'm sure they have some limitations to that, but the common things that we expect to go wrong would be taken care of as part of the system, or part of the subscription.
Great. And the follow-up to that, I do remember talking about this over the last few years, and how we wanted to integrate into our existing system, and that makes sense. Does this WatchGuard, are we, are we leveraging a state contract? It seems like a lot of police agencies would be looking at this. Is that how we purchase this?
Yes, they are. We have confirmed that they're, they're on the state contract and, and that the quote is done consistent with the state contract.
All right, thank you.
All right. Council? Councilmember Carlson?
Motion to adopt resolution 21-65, amending the 2021 budget for police body worn camera system, digital evidence technician and office space reconstruction.
Second.
Motion by Carlson, second by Ray Rower. Is there any further discussion?
It's time.
Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Thank you, Captain Steiner. Item 18, consider approval of an architectural and engineering services agreement for fire station number three replacement. Somebody want to do this, or you want me to read the description, or what do you want me to do?
Sure. Mayor and Council, I'll hit some highlights, and then Chief Piper is here as well and can answer any questions or make some statements if needed. So several years ago, the city conducted a facility needs assessment. One of the central recommendations in that assessment was to consider replacement of current fire station three, which is our oldest fire station, was constructed, the original piece of it in 1970, and had a lot of deferred maintenance issues and was sort of inadequate from a modern equipment standpoint, and would have been very expensive to rehabilitate. So the recommendation was to build a new one. In the 2021 budget, we included some dollars for architectural services in order to start the planning process for replacement of that fire station. We went through selective RFP process early this year, ended up selecting CNH. Initially, just had them conduct, kind of entered into a contract with them to do some conceptual planning so we could have a better understanding of the building, the layout on the site, and probably more importantly, what the estimated costs were going to be and a timeline for moving forward. That was presented to Council at their last council meeting a couple of weeks ago. In order to move forward in that process, we need to enter into a new agreement, and the size of the agreement is such that we need Council approval to do so. So that's the agreement you see before you. The agreement itself follows a city model for the agreement as opposed to the standard EIA contract. We think this one's a little more straightforward and simpler for our city purposes, and then I'll stop there and see if Chief Piper has any other comments.
Mayor and Council, I have nothing different than what I said at the workshop, but I'm here for any questions.
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with CNH Architects for architectural and engineering services for the replacement of fire station number three.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Johnson. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Griszkowiac.
I don't think I asked one question at the last meeting, and I'm asking a question almost every agenda item. But with this agreement, we get engineering services, basically end-to-end. From what we saw conceptually, all the way through to if we selected the contractor, this company with this agreement, they manage the construction of it as well, the construction agreements? Is that everything contained in here?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, we will, we will be, it's in our best interest to bring on board a construction manager as well. We've had Kinghorn Construction now participate in meetings the last few weeks. So Kinghorn would be the party responsible, once the construction begins, to manage, manage those contracts, the subs and so forth. What these folks would do is set up all of those things and be a part of the construction conversation, of course, but it covers areas like architectural design, construction drawings, mechanical, electrical plans, the civil, the structural, landscaping, kind of all of that end-to-end services, and then be a part of that team, the team being the city, the architect, and our construction manager during the construction phase. But there'll be some other agreements that will come down the line that the city council will need to consider, but in order to kind of get further down that road, we needed to start in a new contract.
So not to exceed the amount in here, including, just reading this, bidding and construction administration?
Correct. They will create the construction drawings, be a part of that bidding process at the, when the time is necessary, which we're looking at December, January timeframe. There'll be several points along the road between now and then, that information would come back to City Council, such that if there were concerns or we wanted to pause on the project, we certainly could. You'll have to consider things like financing for the project, which inevitably will require some sort of bonding. You know, when we get through kind of the schematic design phase, we'll be touching base with Council again to kind of show you where we're at, the estimated costs, before we take another jump on the, you know, the final pieces of everything. Yeah, that's all I can think of for now.
Okay.
All right.
All right. Any other questions on this?
No fire poles in the firehouse.
Not as yet, no.
Kind of disappointed about that, to be honest.
I don't think we've had a motion on this yet, have we?
Yeah, we did.
Did we vote on it?
Nope.
We have a motion and a second, though.
We're in discussion, yep.
Really?
And then, yeah, discussion?
I made the motion.
Somehow I didn't make my notes on that, all right. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, do we have any other discussion then? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Sorry for letting you down there, Mr. Brody, I just lost track there. All right, we are up to open mic, public comment. Is anybody here for open mic this evening? We don't have any reports on previous open mics, and that brings us to other, we don't have anybody online, right, for, are we zooming this?
Mayor and Council, we do not have anybody online. I should have mentioned Quinn Hudson from the architectural firm was here just to listen, or if there were any questions of him, I wanted to let you know that, and realized I didn't until we were through. But otherwise, there, there are no public attendees on the meeting.
All right, thank you. So we are up to other business then.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Demmer.
So just a reminder that school is now out, just like it's always good to remember when school goes in, traffic patterns change and, and things like that. School is out now, so watch out for kids at times where you wouldn't have seen kids a little while ago. And then, of course, you know, congratulations to any seniors who graduated during what, what hopefully is a year that proves their resilience beyond what they have to do in future years, but, but anyway, I just, just wanted to thank all the, the staff and, and teachers and everyone who had to, to deal with this year. And let's hope for something slightly more what we're used to next year.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Ray Rower.
I would just like to thank all of the city staff and all the residents at my first summer in the city event. I learned that I will not be using flushable wipes again because as you sit there, if you poke it and you poke it and you poke it, it doesn't rip up or deteriorate in any way. And also grease, even if you use hot water and Dawn dish soap, it still becomes a solid chunk that the city has to get rid of. Going to plant some things for the bees. There's just all kinds of really neat stuff there, and it was a great night out, so I appreciate all of you being there.
When was our, when's our next one, Matt? Connect that together here.
Our next one is next Tuesday, a week from tonight, I believe at Parkside Park, I was just trying to pull that up.
Parkside Park.
Parkside, that's right.
It's the park that's right next to the park.
All right. Yeah, and to Councilmember Ray Rower's point, there's lots of tables, lots of staff, lots of information. I don't know if the U of M will be there again, but it cost me $400 for a new controller for my sprinkler system after I saw it, and then, of course, I torched it tonight, Chief, I'll tell you about that later. So, and then we've got the concert in the parks going on down at the dam, and this week is the legendary Percolators Band, and then the 24th is the Rocky Lynn Country. And I think our Fourth of July event, is that before or after our first, our first meeting's the sixth?
Right.
Okay, yeah, so, yeah, so make sure you get your city newsletter out that's got the full schedule for the Fourth of July celebration down at the Coon Rapids Ice Center. We've got the 5K, the parade, the car show, the bands, the best fireworks in the Midwest.
Cheese curds.
Cheese, yeah, I don't know what they got specific.
I'm hoping.
So, all right.
Parade on the third and fireworks on the fourth.
Yep, there you go.
So you can watch them in Anoka on the third, and you can come see the real fireworks on the fourth.
Councilmember Geisler.
Joan has something.
Mayor and Council, I just wanted to point out that the Arts Commission has their photo contest up and running. It started June 1, runs through September 15. This year's theme is hometown pride. More information on the city's website.
Photo contest, all right, very good. And people from the Arts Commission and Historic Commission are at those meetings in the cities, so it's always an opportunity to learn about that stuff as well. Any other business coming before Council this evening?
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Geisler to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.